Could you do this? Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the April 17, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. This meeting is called to order. Tom, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have two commissioners absent tonight with excused absences. That would be Commissioner Steiner and Commissioner Washburn. All other commissioners are present. We also have Michael Houston joining us from the City Attorney's Office. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Announcements and introductions. Commissioner Leah?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Hazeney?
Well, I just want to, yes, for those who are celebrating, I just want to wish everyone a happy Passover.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, and I have none. So, moving on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address the Commission on matters that are not on the agenda. I have two speaker cards, but they both appear to be on item number two. So, and I don't see anyone. So, we will move on to the consent calendar. We only have one item on the consent calendar tonight, and that is approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 6, 2025. Do we have any additions or corrections?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The minutes of the meeting of March 6 are approved. Onto public hearing item file number VAR 2025-001. This is a request for a variance for a 123 square foot addition within the front yard setback to an existing single-family residence. The subject site is located at 4525 Park Serena within this residential, single-family zoning district. And I do want to note for the record that we received, I believe, six items of correspondence from neighbors, it appears mostly immediate neighbors of the property in support of the project. And those, that correspondence will form a part of the file. Okay, we have a presentation.
Well, Joel's, just to remind everybody, that's Joel Hayes over there. Sitting next to him is Rachel Zadikoff.
Yes.
But it will be Joel giving the presentation.
Thank you. Joel, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. First, I want to mention that the project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet. And as Commissioner Fassberg already mentioned, staff did receive the six items of public correspondence, which are included with the file. A little bit about the property here. As you can see here in the location image, this is one of the homes that's located on the Calabasas Lake. It's in a regularly shaped 5,662 square foot lot within the Calabasas Park HOA and, of course, the residential, single-family zoning district. The property is located at the roundabout at the end of Park Serena there. Directly north is the Calabasas Lake. To the south and east are other single-family residences. And then to the west is HOA-owned undeveloped open space and also, of course, other single-family homes. The site is currently improved with a 3,407 square foot, two-story single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. About the project description, the required application, this project proposal includes enclosing a portion of the existing front balcony. As you can see, I'm going to show you an image in a second here that's going to show that. This front balcony will be expanded, excuse me, will expand to bedrooms, ultimately resulting in a 123 square foot addition to the existing 3,407 square foot home. Since the existing front balcony is located within the required 20-foot front yard setback, enclosing a portion of the front balcony requires approval of a variance application. And then the Calabasas Municipal Code identifies that the Planning Commission is the review authority for these variance applications. So as mentioned, here are some images from the front of the home. The homeowner is currently working on some interior renovations and improvements. And so, as you can see, that's some of the construction equipment, of course, in the front. These images do, however, give a perspective for the front of the home. And so, you can see that balcony there that the homeowner is proposing to enclose. This image here, provided by the homeowner, is also included in the findings document. This shows the present 10-foot-long balcony for perspective purposes. This shows the existing second floor that has a setback of approximately 18 feet from the property, excuse me, from the front to property line, just to give some perspective. And as you can see here, about 4 feet 4 inches is that overhang, as you can see there. And then, of course, 18 feet 6 inches is basically the width of the existing balcony. So a little bit of history about the property itself. So previously, the applicant received two variances to allow for a 446 square foot addition, approved in 2018. That addition was in the front and the side, adding some additional room area. The previously approved variances allowed for reductions of the required front setback from 20 feet to 14 feet and of the required side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. The homeowner also received a zoning clearance permit in July of last year to enclose an existing balcony towards the rear end of the home, adding 195 square feet of space. And also, that project included interior remodeling of the existing home, as some of those photos that I previously Going on to the variance here, as mentioned, the applicant is requesting a variance from the city's front yard setback standard. The existing house has a front setback of 11 feet 11 inches. This is measured from the front lot line to the existing first-floor garage, while the required front setback is 20 feet. The second floor of the home is set back approximately 18 feet from the front lot line. The applicant is proposing to extend 6 feet 1 inches of the second-floor balcony to habitable space, thus by enlarging two bedrooms on the second floor. And this would align the second floor with the first-floor garage's front wall. Those walls would be aligned, the second floor and the first floor. Since a proposed project will further reduce the already non-conforming front yard setback condition relative to the second floor, the construction of the 123 square foot addition requires approval of a variance to the setback standard. These are some images here, kind of zooming in on the site plan to basically show that, as I've mentioned in more detail here. So first, you have the existing non-conforming first-floor area that is shown in green. Next, you have the existing non-conforming second-floor area, shown in red here. And then I should also mention, excuse me, the, as mentioned before, some of the setback distances, as I've, as I've mentioned. So you have, let me go back, my apologies. So you have 11 feet 11 inches here. Oh, they can't see the cursor. My apologies, you couldn't see the cursor. So you have the setback distance here for the existing setback for the first floor. And then in red, excuse me, I'm talking aloud, you have the existing non-conforming second-floor And then lastly, in blue here, this is the area of addition subject to the actual variance And so, as to mention, showing those images there, the home does have that existing second-floor balcony that projects out approximately 10 feet over the first-floor garage into the front setback area. This does extend to a point about 3 feet past the first-floor garage. While the proposed project does increase the nonconformity on the second floor, the proposed addition on the second floor would not extend further into this front setback than the existing first-floor garage. So here we have the site plan. The site plan shows the extent of the proposed balcony and the dark gray hash. I've also included a red enclosement there that you can see the actual proposed addition there that would expand the two bedrooms on the second floor for the two-story, single-family home. The residence is legal non-conforming because all of the setbacks, front, sides, and rear, do not meet the required development standards for setbacks. The existing legal non-conforming front yard setback is 11 feet 11 inches for the first floor and 18 feet for the second floor, where the required setback is 20 feet. The two side yard setbacks are 6 feet 1 inches on the east side and 5 feet 1 inches, excuse me, 5 feet 1 inch to the west side, where it, of course, 10 feet is a required side yard setback distance in the residential, single-family So due to the existing non-conforming west side yard setback, enclosing the deck also results in an addition within a required side yard setback. However, this encroachment is consistent with the Calabasas Municipal Code, as both the added area and the length of the addition are less than 50% of the existing area and length that encroach into the western side yard setback respectively. And so essentially, what we're looking at here is the area and length of the addition. And then if you can see my cursor going up here, this is the length and the area that we are comparing for the existing home. And so, both of those percentages are less than 50%, of course, that meet the code. And so, with the exception of the above-mentioned setback conditions and the requests for the front yard setback variance, the proposed project meets all other required development standards for the residential, single-family zone, including site coverage, permeable surfaces, and height limits. Here's the existing first-floor plan. There are no changes proposed, of course. The first floor is 1,648 square feet. That is not including the 406 square foot garage. Here is the proposed second-floor plan. This shows the existing 1,759 square feet with the proposed 123 square foot addition on the balcony. That would equal 1,882 square feet total. Here is the proposed south elevation. I'm looking at the front of the home, showing the proposed addition. And please note the gabled roof that shows the new doors opening Shown here is the elevation from the west. This is looking towards the side of the home. This shows the new addition and the balcony that extends over the first-floor garage. And we are mainly looking at this area that you can see my cursor circling over right This is a proposed rendering, showing the proposed addition and that reduced balcony for illustrative purposes. You can also, of course, see that gabled roof. Regarding design, the most significant design modifications involve changing the shed roof condition to a gabled roof facing the street in the area of the addition. Otherwise, the addition would match the colors and materials of the existing house. This project did not require ARP, Architectural Review Panel, review, as the subject site is not within a designated scenic corridor, and the project does not require a site plan review. Looking at the home size comparison, home sizes in the vicinity range from 2,042 square feet to 5,360 square feet. Lot sizes range from approximately 4,068 square feet to 20,135 square feet. I do want to note, though, that this 500-square-foot range did pick up some homes that are not located directly on the lake, so basically a street down. So just to mention that, that, you know, the 20,135 square feet was one of the homes that was basically not located directly on the lake. That's why you see a bit of that variability there. The average home size in the vicinity is 2,935 square feet, and the average lot size, 6,804 square feet. With the proposed project, the residence would be 3,530 square feet in total, and of course, the lot size would remain at 5,662 square feet. I do want to mention the home comparison table, the 500-foot radius of the subject site. That data does come from the LA County Assessor. That does not include garages. I did a bit of research as well. It appears non-conforming setback conditions are fairly common for properties in this area. For context, I evaluated homes within 500 feet using our GIS system and using the GIS mapping program and found that of the 34 total homes within 500 feet, that approximately 11 homes, or 32% of them, project into the city's required front yard setback requirement. Listed here are the six required findings for a variance per section 17.62.080 of the Calabasas Municipal Code. The applicant's proposed findings for a variance are included in packets as Exhibit B. With that, the proposed project will not alter the existing use of the subject site, which is in allowed use in the residential, single-family zoning district. The project is in conformance of development to code, with the exception of the front yard setback for which a variance is being sought. Homes in the neighborhood range in size from 2,042 square feet to 5,360 square feet, and the project is exempt from seek-by-review pursuant to Section 15061 and 15301. And with that, staffers prepared to assist the commission developing the findings for approval, or denial is required. And thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Joel. That was a very thorough presentation. Before I open the public hearing, does anyone have any questions of staff or comments? Commissioner Leah?
Yes, I do have one. Joel, if all the variances were done at one time, would it still pass, you had mentioned a ratio before, if they were all done at one time, would it still be passing muster?
Commissioner Leah, when you mean passing muster, could you elaborate, please?
Well, it would comply with the municipal code. They were all done at one time.
I can jump in, because every variance application is unique to its own circumstances.
That's not my question.
So I understand what your question is, but if they all were done at the same time, you would be considering all the variances at the same time. So there's really no difference between now and then. They're just not done.
It's important. Can I get a clear answer? Would or would not?
Commissioner Leah? And I think I'm going to turn to our city attorney. That's not what's before us today. What is before us is the particular variance that is currently being sought based upon the particular project. And any comment?
Just generally speaking, variance requests would be, if it were all to be evaluated at one time, the Planning Commission would be evaluating whether it meets the necessary findings for a variance. So in this particular case, the Planning Commission's evaluating the particular proposal. And if it was a broader, if you were trying to go back in time and evaluate whether all of those cumulatively would meet the findings, it would be a different analysis, but it would still be the same findings that the Planning Commission would I'm not sure if I understand your question correctly, but that's how you.
This is what I would consider a step transaction, and I'm just wondering whether, if it was done in one giant leap, would it would still pass muster versus piece by piece?
It really comes down to the, whether the specific finding, the Planning Commission could make the specific findings that are required under the municipal code or not?
Okay, thank you. I'll just add, on that same theme, and probably a good reason why Commissioner Leah brings this up, is that we've got an area here, as well as another one of the subdivisions that fronts the lake, that have an RS zoning district that was applied when the city incorporated. And these are not really lots that are similar to lots in other RS-zone communities in the city. These are smaller. They actually were designed, in most cases, as what, at least at that time, was referred to as a zero lot line development. And so, they have, by design, very narrow and strangely configured lots, because they were done as a planning and development under the county at that time. And so unfortunately, variances do find themselves before the commission more frequently with these neighborhoods than anywhere else in the city. And it is on our radar as something to improve through our zoning ordinance and to try to come up with an overlay that will make this less common.
Okay. Commissioner Leah, anything further? Nope. Commissioner Hazeney?
Can we articulate the special circumstances required for finding number one? That there are special circumstances applicable to the property which do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district? I mean, can we just articulate that in so many words? Is it, is it that so many other properties nearby have variances? I mean, this one already has variances granted for setbacks.
I don't think we have to.
It's an excellent question.
But I don't think we have to come to the, we don't have to specify, do we? We can just make the finding.
Well, I mean, usually there's a unique feature, shape of the lot, topographic feature. There's going to be something unusual about the lot. And I think Tom had articulated that this area in general has unusually shaped and smaller lots, and we've applied an RS zoning category to it that doesn't really fit as well as it could in other RS zones. So, and maybe Joel, I don't know if we can put an image of the plan back up there, but the site plan would be a really good image to take a look at to see how it has many different lot lines that are unusual, little notches that kind of cut into what a straight lot would be. And so, I mean, really, the finding is for you guys to mull over and make in general, but, you know, this, you know, we'd mentioned it's an irregularly shaped lot, and you look at it, it's very irregularly shaped, you know. So, that's really something you guys need to ponder in terms of being able to make that variance finding.
Yeah. So if you're looking at that one image, you've got, I did a quick counting here, like nine different sides to that lot. It's not a four-sided lot. It's nine-sided. And you can see it's got an inward notch on one side. Unlike the ones to the east, it doesn't front on the lake. It has open space between it and the lake, even though it's a lake-fronting orientation. And so, it isn't like the neighbors to the east in that regard. It's really unique among a bunch of unique lots.
And I can even add, it's on a cul-de-sac, right? So you have a semi-circular front lot line and an attempt, as most people would, to try to square up a house to a street. So you kind of get an interesting, right, unique kind of feature in that. And you see this 20-foot setback line that kind of, some of the front of the building actually meets, right? But then as you squared up the building, it starts projecting into that, that front yard setback as you go further. I guess that would be to the east.
And Commissioner Hazeney, that notch in the western property line is very unique. Zooming out of this even further, that really the only, this is one of the only properties that has a notch like that, that basically causes them to be situated much closer to the side property lines than is typical for homes in that neighborhood, as well as they also reduce some square feet. If that was basically a straight line, you would have, of course, additional lot, lot square footage that would be included. So that does take away a little bit as well.
Just for absolute clarity, the balcony itself won't be extended. It's just the habitable space behind the balcony will be extended?
Let me go to the, thank you, Commissioner Hazeney. Let me go to the image here. So the bedrooms here will be extended out 6 feet 1 inches, and then there'll be a remaining 3-foot balcony.
Anything else? No. Commissioner Harrison?
No questions of staff.
Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. And I have two speaker cards. Simon Chernin?
Yeah.
And please state your name and city of residence. And please state your name and city of residence.
Sure, sure. My name is Simon Chernin. I am the resident of 40525 Park Serena. I really do appreciate you, all of you, taking the time out of your busy schedules and the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And thank you so much for the, Joel and Rachel for being here and helping me out with this. This is all so foreign to me, and I appreciate the support and guidance here. The request is for a variance of a small second-story addition over our existing balcony. Our home was built in 1968, as you mentioned, a zero-lot line. So while it has charm, it doesn't offer much flexibility when it comes to making space for a growing family. This proposed addition doesn't expand the footprint of the home. It simply makes better use of the space we already have, in a way that's functional, modest, and designed to blend seamlessly with the existing architecture. We've put a lot of real thought into making sure it enhances the look and feel of the home, and by extension, the street. I'm also grateful that six of our neighbors submitted emails in support of the project. As you mentioned before, it's, a lot of them are the ones that are existing on the street. They've seen the plans, and they appreciate the thoughtful design as well. You guys have covered a lot of detail here, so I really appreciate your time again, your service to the city, and the consideration of this request. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Commissioner Harrison, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So I'm concerned about one thing. First of all, I think this is one of the best lots around the lake, so...
I agree. Thank you.
Even though, from my count, it has 11 sides, it's just a wonderful location.
Thank you. We've been happily living there for 10 years.
So you're very fortunate.
Right. Thank you.
But what I couldn't find, what wasn't very clear to me, it's on Slide 13, was the front facade. It's also on Slide 15, both of them. You've got two windows, and the gabled roof is fine, but I cannot tell what, how the eaves are projecting, or whether, it seems too flat to me. And all the examples, I don't know if you took these photos or somebody else.
Yeah, I did.
So if you look on almost all the photos, they have overhanging eaves that break up the flat facade, or they have a design element. Like on page five of Exhibit B, it's got three tiles, three of those circular, like tiles. On page, on the last page, there's what's called a catterfoil, but it's, or it looks like catrefol, you know? It's a four-leaf design at the top. Some people put a vent there. Some people put ironwork there. Some people just put something to break up that flat triangular facade, and maybe pull out the eaves over that section. Otherwise, it looks flat. And so, if you want an example of what flat looks like, it's the very last one you have on Page seven, the one with the catterfoil and a row of windows. There's no articulation. There's no depth. There are no sills. There's no surrounds around the windows. The windows don't conform to the, anywhere, you know, in the neighborhood, they look busy. And then it's got that design element on the top. I mean, that is, that will always look like an addition. That will never look like it belongs in that house.
Gotcha.
And I'm just hoping if you'll agree to do something, either extend the eaves or, and look at all the other examples, or put some design element above, so that it's not just blank, flat facade.
Sure. I mean, that's a very fair point. That's something I've been considering myself. I've just kind of been focusing on getting all the nuts and bolts onto the paper and, you know, getting it to the committee for their review. But, you know, that's absolutely something that I'm going to consider if the project moves forward, for sure. You know, making it look seamless within the community, making it look nice, that's a lot of, like, empty space right there, so...
Right. No, I think we'll all approve it, but like, so like, if you look to the right, you know, on Slide 15, there's an overhang on that eve. And this one doesn't have, you're, on Slide 15, you don't have anything hanging over. It's, so it doesn't look like it quite goes.
You mean, right there?
Yeah. Do you see how, what I'm talking about, the eve on the, above the addition?
Yeah.
Doesn't project the way the rest of the house does.
Sure. That's certainly something that we can do to match the rest.
Right. So that's what I would ask, that you match, I mean, would you agree to match the rest at least, or put a design element of some kind there?
Yeah.
So that it doesn't look like just flat, and it didn't go, it doesn't...
Sure. That's a very fair point, for sure.
Okay. That was my question, really.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. Commissioner? No? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have another speaker card from Darren Mitchell. Again, please state your name and city of residence.
Hi. My name is Darren Mitchell. I'm resident of Calabasas. I've been here about over 10 years now. I don't have a speech planned, but I wrote a couple things while we're talking. Thank you. Happy to pass over to who celebrates. Other than that, thank you so much for doing this, because this is what keeps Calabasas beautiful, and we appreciate that. Like I said, I'm a neighbor. Also, I'm a walker, runner. I walk by that house probably three times a week. Beautiful. We're good friends of the Chernins. Always said that roof is really ugly. When I walk by, they have this giant roof, and I know you mentioned some facade, but I think the way they're changing to the gabled roof is going to be just a lot nicer, more beautiful. Also, they have this balcony, this, I don't know however long the balcony is, but it's just never used. It's just a giant, kind of like flat balcony that's not used. And, but what he's doing now, it's going to just be a lot better, more usable. As I was mentioning, the Chernins are great friends of mine. They're great neighbors. They're great community residents, and they're a bigger family. Their kids are growing, and they need the space. So this is, this is pretty much, in my opinion, a really easy, easy way to get the space without actually building out, which a lot of people do. I think this is a pretty small variance. I think it's 120 square feet, 25 square feet. It's not extending outside, so I know you mentioned, Commissioner Harrison, it sounds like it could be approved, because it's not, it's not a big deal. And I think I just want to give my, my closing is thank you guys again, and I hope, I hope you guys approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
All right.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any comments? Do we have a motion?
I have comments.
Okay. Go ahead.
First, I, this is just an aside, I should have mentioned it before I got up here, but the bedroom downstairs, or it's marked as a bedroom, I don't see how it is a bedroom, because it doesn't have a closet, and there's no, there's no bath or shower downstairs, but maybe you're using it as such, I don't know. But I'm, you know, as long as they match the extended eve and maybe put a design element of some kind up there, even a vent to break up that, I'm certainly fine with that. I have an issue with finding number two that we have to make. Where was that? It was on Slide 18, I think.
18.
Yeah. And it's, it's, it's just worded, so that I don't see how we can make that finding, but I think the law is just too strict or something. It says, the granting of the variance, which to me is very minor, is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights possessed by other property owners and denied to this property owner. I mean, is this standard language from some code? Or is this just our code?
That is, that is from the code.
But is it from our code, or is it from some state code?
It's from our code.
So that specific language is from the city's municipal code?
Got it.
If the commission's interested, I actually have the state law on variances pulled up, and it sort of mirrors what's in Number One and Number Two. I could read that aloud if the commission's interested, or if that's too much legal use.
No, that's all right. But it just seems like this is such a, this is a hurdle that you can almost never get over. I mean, substantial property rights possessed by other property owners, I mean, I just don't see that, but I think the law doesn't make, this just doesn't make any sense to me. So...
That's it?
That's it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Don't be sorry. Do we have any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve this. I'd have staff come back with approval.
Okay.
Do you want to condition that on the facade and anything else? Do you want to figure out the wording?
Well, if they'll agree to do, to...
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, so with the condition that the owner or applicant matched the roof line and/or, and/or put in a design element to break up that facade.
Sure. Absolutely.
All right. Well...
Sorry.
I don't know how to word it.
It's, it's, you know, it is a design feature, but if the applicant is willing to accept the condition, we can condition it on that. I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Mr. Chernin, can you come back up, please? You've heard Commissioner Harrison's comments and requests that you agree to a condition being placed on approval to, and you'll have, you'll have to word it.
So to, I missed jump. To match the existing eaves on the other side...
The overhang?
The overhang.
The overhang element?
The overhang depth of the other eaves, and possibly add a design element to break up that facade.
Since we're saying possibly, why don't we leave, why don't we leave that off?
Okay.
And leave it to the applicant's discretion, understanding what we would like to see.
Okay.
How about, if I may, how about subject to review and approval by the director for determination of substantial conformance with the commission's direction, or something like that?
Perfect.
That's fine. But does that include the eaves?
I understand, yeah. What you want to see, and the applicant has agreed to, is to redesign that one facade, where you have a new intersecting gable to have, or an overlapping roof eve.
Right.
I mean, extending roof eve that will create a shadow line.
Similar to what, yeah.
Probably at least 12 inches.
Similar to what exists on the rest of the house.
Yes.
Right?
And, and just to get an oral agreement, you do agree to that, to that condition?
Yeah. I think it's a swell idea. Sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. So you want to restate your motion, and maybe with a little bit of help from Tom?
Well, I think Tom already did, but move to approve with...
To direct...
Go ahead.
So the motion would be to direct staff to return with a resolution approving...
Approval.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The variance subject to...
An additional condition.
With the addition, with the condition that the applicant's approved to extend the eaves above the addition at least as deep as the existing eaves, and any, and a design, anything else subject to the director's approval.
You've got that? Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. This is approved. For staff to come back with a resolution for approval. That will come before us at the next meeting for the formal, the formal approval. So congratulations. Okay. Let's move on. I think that's it for tonight, so we have the director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Michael wasn't able to be here this evening, so I'm doing my best effort to fill his shoes, and all I'll tell you about is number one. Your next meeting is scheduled for May 1st. We have a rather full agenda, fuller than tonight, for sure, because you'll have the Kia auto dealership proposal before you, and there's also a new single-family residence proposal that'll be before you as well, a site plan review, in-house treatment permits, and a few things like that that are always fun in a scenic corridor. So that's in the old Topanga Canyon area. So it'll have an old Topanga Canyon overlay, the scenic corridor overlay, and its OS zoning district. So there'll be a lot of details to cover as part of that hearing, so it'll be, it'll be a little more busy than this time. The other thing I'll just mention is we're busily working on the objective design standards, which is something we have to prepare under the housing element and the requirements of state law. And I just wanted to let you know we're meeting regularly with the consultants on that, and we're making good progress. That's all I have.
Thank you. We have any reports from members of the commission? Commissioner Leah? Commissioner?
Briefly, I got to attend the tennis tournament. It's my first professional tennis tournament. I want to thank the city for making the seats available to me. I had a great time. I watched the semifinals and the final. I also want to commend the fire department. There was a fire, it was a house fire in Calabasas Village, very close to where my dad lives. And the fire department was able to contain that, and one structure was lost. Unfortunately, a life was lost. But the fact that it didn't spread does mean a lot personally, and again, just commendations to the fire department. I wish I knew which engine it was, but to all firemen and women, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison, anything? All right. We have a motion to adjourn?
I move. Second.
Hearing no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Sorry for making...